I will call the April meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Creekmore to give us invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you to ask for your guidance, wisdom, and support as we begin this meeting. We ask that you will be in our midst and for your blessings to help us engage in meaningful discussion. Allow us to continue to grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of our community. Fill us with your grace to make appropriate decisions that will affect our city. Help us to be able to review the matters at hand in a reasonable and thoughtful way. In this holy week especially, let us continue to give our thanks for the many blessings that you have bestowed upon us. Guide each one of us so that we can make fruitful contributions as we work for the city to accomplish our goals this day. Amen.
Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Bauer.
Here.
Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwan.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards. Commissioner Goodman.
Yeah.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Vice Chairman Staler.
Here.
And Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Are there any corrections to the March minutes? Seeing none here and none, they will stand as presented. Today we have five items on our agenda. Public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponent, and five minutes for rebuttal by the proponents. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is rezoning request RZN 2024-00010 Holland-Glen. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request RZN 2024-010 Holland-Glen submitted by Brian Rowe, applicant on behalf of White Holland Road LLC. Property owner in accordance with Sections 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk in order to change the zoning from A, Agricultural Zoning District, to RC, Residential Compact Zoning District for a portion of property located at 2201 Holland Road Zoning Map 33 Parcel 113. The affected area is further identified as being located in Holy Neck Voting Borough, Zoned A, Agricultural Zoning District, and B2, General Commercial Zoning District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the commercial corridor land use type and suburban neighborhood land use. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request RZN 2024-010. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to rezonate a portion of the subject property from Agricultural Zoning District to RC Residential Compact Conditional Zoning District for the purpose of constructing 83 residential units. The property up for discussion is designated as commercial corridor and suburban neighborhood land use type in the Suffolk 2045 Comprehensive Plan. To the north of the property are detached single-family homes, Zoned RLM, Residential Low-Medium Density, and vacant lands, Zoned RR, Rural Residential. To the south is the Target Warehouse Distribution Center, Zoned M1, Light Industrial. To the east is the Maple Hill Subdivision and Forest Glen Terrace Subdivision, Zoned RLM, and Commercial Uses, Zoned B2. And to the west is vacant forested lands, Zoned Agricultural, B2, and RR. Additionally, the Westport Commerce Park, Zoned M1 and B2. The applicant proposes to rezone a portion of the subject parcel from Agricultural to RC Zoning District for the purpose of constructing 39 townhome units and 44 duplex units for a total of 83 residential units. The area to be rezoned to RC will consist of 28.67 acres, while 6.06 acres located along the front of the parcel along Holland Road will retain the B2 zoning district. A conceptual master plan has been provided and proffered in support of this application. The conceptual plan demonstrates that the residential portion of the development will take access from Holland Road through the commercial out parcels. The development may consist of private streets and due to the number of proposed units will require that secondary emergency access be provided. While the provided concept does not include secondary access, the applicant has been made aware that secondary access will be required at the time of development plan review. As a part of this application, the applicant has proffered that a portion, being 25% or 11 units total, of the 44 proposed duplex units will consist of affordable units as defined by HUD. In this case, the affordability is tied to HUD's definition of affordability within the Hampton Roads region. Specifically, these 11 units will be made affordable to individuals or families making less than 80% of the median household income within the region, which caps the sale price for these units at $340,000 in the 2025 fiscal year. Wetlands are located along the western and southern portions of the parcel, occupying 0.79 acres of the site, thereby reducing the potential number of units that could be realized. After subtracting out the total amount of critical area from the area to be rezoned, the parcel is left with a net developable acreage of 27.88 acres. The subject property is designated as commercial corridor land use type and the portion being rezoned suburban neighborhood land use type. Applicable zoning districts include residential low density, residential low medium density, and the target density range is 0.5 to 4 dwelling units per acre. As proposed and proffered by the applicant, the development of 83 units would yield a net density of 3.4 dwelling units per acre, which would align with the target density of 0.5 to 4 dwelling units per acre. As previously stated, the applicable zoning districts outlined for the suburban neighborhood land use type include residential low density and residential low medium density zoning districts. While these districts are identified as being the most appropriate within the suburban neighborhood land use type, it is important to note that the 2045 Comprehensive Plan states that other zoning districts might be appropriate if the application of the district to a specific site is found to be consistent with the purpose and intent of the land use type. As previously stated, the applicant has proffered 83 units, thereby capping the density at 3.4 units per acre, and a portion of the 44 duplex units will consist of affordable units as defined by HUD. While the proposed RC zoning district is not listed as an applicable zoning district, the intent of the suburban neighborhood land use type and target density ranges are met. Comprehensive plans set specific themes and policies related to land use, transportation, open space, and the environment that should be considered when contemplating a rezoning application. Relevant to this application are the following. Action L1.1, which speaks to focusing development in designated growth areas that is consistent with future land use map. Action H13 and H14, which speaks to increasing the availability of affordable and workforce housing, each of which has been detailed and outlined in staff's report. In accordance with our adequate public facility standards, no rezoning request should be approved, which would cause a reduction in levels of service for any public facility impacted. With regards to sewer and water, the Department of Public Utilities has stated that water and sewer are available for connection. While the department understands the challenges involved with land acquisition in order to provide a secondary access through Beechwood Drive, the Department of Public Utilities strongly prefers looping the water main through the site to either Beechwood Drive or Manning Bridge Road for redundancy. Water and sewer models will be due at the time of development plan review. With regards to stormwater management, the Department of Public Works Engineering has no concerns related to stormwater at this time. All stormwater will be addressed at the time of development plan review. And with regards to transportation, the Department of Public Works Traffic Engineering has reviewed the submitted traffic impact study and associated voluntary proffers and found them both to be acceptable. The subject property is currently assigned to Lakeland High School, Forest Glen Middle, and Kilby Shores Elementary School. As the portion to be rezoned is agricultural, it is assumed that the property could yield a maximum of three cuts and a residue, therefore four single-family dwelling units by right. As such, a credit of one student at each level would be applied. After subtracting out the students that may be generated by right development, the net impact of the rezoning would be 11 high school students, nine middle school students, and 15 elementary school students. When considering applied credit for by right development and committed development that will be served by the same schools serving the subject parcel, there is sufficient capacity at the high school and middle school levels and a deficit at the elementary school level. The current fiscal year capital improvements program in effect at the time of this application identifies capital projects that would provide additional system-wide capacity that would work to relieve overcrowded schools citywide. The applicant has voluntarily proffered a cash contribution in order to mitigate impacts to the elementary school level. Applicant has voluntarily proffered six conditions in support of this rezoning request, which are provided in detail on this slide. The first proffer pertains to the school contributions in order to mitigate for impacts to the schools. The second proffer speaks to the limit of the development to no more than 83 residential units. Proffer three states that the development shall comply with the provided conceptual master plan. Proffers four and five pertain to traffic improvements, which are outlined in the transportation section of the staff report. And lastly, proffer six states that the developer shall provide certification to the city of Suffolk that a minimum of 11 units shall conform to the HUD standards for affordable In summary, staffs find that this proposal rezoning request RZN 2024-10, conditional, meets the intent of the provisions of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed rezoning of a portion of the property from agricultural to the RC Residential Compact Conditional Zoning District aligns with the goals and objectives established within the Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends approval with the proffers of rezoning request RZN 2024-10. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Commission. My name is Grady Palmer. My business address, 999 Waterside Drive, practice out of the city of Norfolk. It's a pleasure to be here today. I'm trying to find my slide here. That's not even my application. So we're here today for a rezoning application that we call Holland-Glen. You heard a really good explanation that Brittany gave about the application. A couple of things I just want to talk about. Two things that I think are features of this rezoning is that the Route 58 widening project I know that many in Suffolk have been living with for a long time is scheduled to be completed this summer. And that is a significant leading factor for us to pursue this rezoning at this time. If this were approved by the Commission today and then City Council next month, it would take us probably at least a year before we would start constructing any homes in Holland-Glen. So this is a good opportunity for infrastructure to lead the way. And so oftentimes, not just in Suffolk, but in other jurisdictions, we often hear the complaint, why do we have to have the houses and then the infrastructure? So this is a good example of infrastructure leading the way when it comes to Route 58. Another significant feature here, and you can see it here on the slide right here, this is a significant employment center for the city of Suffolk in the Route 58 corridor. You can see the target distribution there towards the bottom of the page. Westport Commerce Park, just to the west of that, Amazon, a significant amount of jobs have been created in this corridor. And one of the emphasis of your 2045 Comprehensive Plan that we're all still getting used to, but one of the things that I think is clear in it is that we want, the city of Suffolk wants to see people living around large employment centers. And so this is what this would do for the Route 58 corridor. I don't think there's been a new house built, or at least a new neighborhood built, on Route 58 or Holland Road in quite some time. So this would be the first new neighborhood. I mean, the demand, I think, will far out surpass this project. We need to do a lot more for this corridor in terms of bringing people, opportunities to live where they work. But this is a great start. It's a good project. You've heard the description, we're mixing in single-family detached homes, attached homes to give a variety of purchase price options for Suffolk residents. So this is a way we oftentimes try to address the affordability issue, is to mix in different types of housing. But one thing that we did, we went one step further here, and I don't know that anyone's done this. I've certainly not seen it in my time in anywhere in Hampton Roads, but we actually have committed to bringing on 11 of our attached units to be affordable as defined by HUD. And there's a whole formula that we use. I want to congratulate staff for really coming up with this idea and helping us understand how that we could incorporate that into the project. But 11 of our homes, of our attached homes, will be affordable as defined by HUD. And if you've got any questions about that, I'd direct you to Mr. Wyman or staff that can kind of explain how this would work. But it's a great opportunity, the private sector working with your city, to come up with a really unique and, I think, something that can be replicated on other projects. But this is a great opportunity to mix in residential where people work. And with the improvements that are being completed to Route 58, we see the opportunity for people to walk to work, walk to commercial, see the very top of our property. That's all Zone B2 commercials vacant right now, but we would envision that to be developed into neighborhood commercial offerings that people could walk to. So we think it's a really great opportunity for this site to go residential, and particularly the style that we're proposing. So just in conclusion, it's in line with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, first of its kind with an affordable housing proffer. I did do some community outreach to the neighborhood, to our east, Maple Hill. They don't have, at least I couldn't find an active civic league, so I sent letters to residents in Maple Hill with a copy of the plan. I did get a few phone calls and questions about it. I didn't hear any objections, there may be some here today, about that. But we're doing everything we can to be good neighbors with Maple Hill and Beechwood Drive to make sure that our project is compatible. And with that, I'll stand by for any questions that you have. I want to introduce Mr. Rowe, who's the applicant, who may be available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Director Wyman. Brittany, thank you very much for the presentation. My name is Brian Rowe. I reside at 803 Cypress Chapel Road in the beautiful city of Suffolk. And I'm just proud to be here tonight, today, to actually talk about the Holland-Glen application. We're excited about this opportunity. Grady, I'm not going to repeat a whole lot of what Grady said, but we're excited about being able to offer, number one, the affordable housing piece of this is critical to us. With D.R. Horton, one of the things we've always tried to do is try to deal with the first-time home buyers if we can. And what's happened over the years, the cost of construction has just gotten to the point of where it's, you know, affordable housing by the federal definition is almost completely unachievable. But Horton has been able to help do these types of things by virtue of being the bulk buyer that they are, buying the materials nationally at a pretty affordable rate. So we're excited about the ability to be able to hit the federal metric here, and it's exciting for us as a company. We're going to still build a very high-quality product here. As the site plan has shown, it's a mix of single-family detached homes that are in keeping with the adjacent neighborhood that backs up to us right there. And then even the attached housing that we're doing are duplexes. It's not like a row of townhomes. These are duplexes, so everything's an end unit, windows around the entire building. So it's going to be a very attractive site. We're excited about it. And I'm standing by for questions from anyone today to help out. Thank you.
May your face?
Good afternoon, Planning Commission. It's nice to be here this afternoon. I'm Amy Boekikio. I'm here with Land Planning Solutions. We're located at 5857 Harborview Boulevard in northern Suffolk. This afternoon, all I would like to add to what's already been stated is that I just want to remind folks that this is an isolated area of agricultural zoning that has had multiple different interested parties in the past, and we think that this kind of was fate to lead us to the project that we have here today for a small residential community. The surrounding land uses map that we included with our application was unique to the site. We tried to really speak to the fact that this is a transitional use, if you're looking east to west, as land uses change on Holland Road, as well as north to south. The existing B2 zoning at the front of the property makes sense for your frontage on Holland Road, and then we'll have some landscape buffers leading into the subdivision. And the RC Residential Compact District was selected because it is the lowest-density zoning district that the city has that allows you to do condo-style ownership in addition to fee simple. So right now, we're still working through our options on secondary access, but being that we have only one confirmed right now at this present day, we are entertaining either a condo or fee simple type of product. Fee simple, of course, is the preference, so if we can gain secondary access, then that's the direction that we'll head in. But overall, we think that this is a compatible use for the area. You know, you're near two schools, two major employment centers, so hopefully the traffic is kind of contained in this area that is undergoing significant roadway improvements that are wrapping up. That's all that I have to share, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have this afternoon. Thank you.
That completes the time for the proponents. Is anyone in the audience in opposition? Seeing none. Do you have any additional comments you would like to make? Okay. I will now close the public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
I've got a question, I believe Mr. Rowe, please. About 11 affordable, is that mixed with the duplex and the single-family home, or is that all in? How's the breakdown on that?
It's all in the duplexes.
So the duplexes will be the affordable?
That's correct.
Okay, that's all I had. Thank you.
Okay, very welcome.
Approval of RZN 2024-010?
Motion for approval?
Yes.
Second. I have a second. Any discussion, the motion? Here and none? I think we can use the electronic device to vote today?
Yes. Yes. So give me one second. Voting should be right under your mic.
Nothing's lit up.
Want to touch it until it lights? Oh, intermedia? No.
Oh, there you go.
They're almost there. There we go. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero. Sorry.
No problem. Congratulations, Mr. Palmer, Mr. Rowe, and Ms. Amy. This will go to City Council on May 21st with the motion from this body with approval. The next item on our agenda today is rezoning request RZN 2024-012 Car Dealership. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Rezoning request RZN 2024-012 Car Dealership submitted by Lisa M. Murphy with Will Cox and Savage PC Attorney on behalf of Peak AVARE LLC. Applicant on behalf of Lynn Drive Associates LLLP. Property owner in accordance with Sections 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk in order to change the zoning from O&amp;I Office Institutional Zoning District to B2 General Commercial Zoning District for property, for the property zoning map 13, parcels 4A*20, 4A*21, 4A*22, 4A*23, 4A*24, a portion of 4B and 4C. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, Zoned O&amp;I Office Institutional Zoning District, and SCAD Special Corridor Overlay District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the northern growth area, commercial corridor land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to rezoning request, RZN 2024-012. Staff Planner Gonzalo Borges will present staff's report.
Evan, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to rezone and amend the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk from OI Office Institutional Zoning District to B2 General Commercial Conditional Zoning District on a property located at Lynn Drive, zoning map 13, parcels 4A20, 4A21, 4A22, 4A23, 4A24, 4B, and 4C. The city's 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area. And the subject property is located in a mixed-use core land use type. The subject property has the following adjacent uses. To the north, two car dealerships and other commercial uses, Zone B2 General Commercial District. On the south, there is a vacant parcel with wetlands and the city of Chesapeake Boundary Line, Zone OI Office Institutional District. To the east, there is a vacant parcel with etlands and the city of Chesapeake Boundary Line, Zone OI Office Institutional District. Residential areas are present in the city of Chesapeake. And finally, to the west, there is a vacant parcel and a nursing care center, Zone OI Office Institutional. The current slide shows the rezoning exhibit, which outlines the boundaries of the parcels to be rezoned from OI to B2, on which the applicant aims to develop and operate two car dealerships, inclusive of repair and body shops. I would also like to mention that the car dealerships are permitted by, are permitted use by right on the B2 zoning district. The proposed development will consist of 130,000-square-foot building and 125,000-square-foot building, each facing Bridge Road, together with parking for storage and display of new and used vehicles. The proposed development will be located in an area that offers a significant mixture of zoning districts and uses. While B2 General Commercial District is not listed in the 2045 Comprehensive Plan as one of the applicable zoning districts, the proposed rezoning, B2 General Commercial District, would allow these dealerships to be located in an appropriate area of the city, since they would be developed in the vicinity of similar uses, such as the other two dealerships that are located approximately 250 feet from the subject property. The proposed dealerships would also be adjacent to other commercial uses that operate within the motorized vehicles realm. Simultaneously, the 2045 Comprehensive Plan considers the commercial use, such as the proposed one, a primary use for the mixed-use core land use type. In addition, according to the Unified Development Ordinance, UDO, the B2 zoning district supports and permits by right these proposed use. The proposed use would also be appropriately inserted within a mixed-use corridor, Bridge Road, that can successfully accommodate the dealerships because of the multiplicity of existing road infrastructure and access, such as Bridge Road, Interstate 664, and the Western Freeway. A wetlands delineation was provided by the applicant, and it shows that there are delineated wetlands on the subject property. The applicant is submitting a joint permit application to impact up to two acres of wetlands in the front of the subject property. The applicant will retain a significant portion of the forested wetlands as both conservation and screening measures. These wetlands that I'm referring to are the ones located sort of in the south, in the back of the property. The remaining wetlands in the southern portion of the subject property will not be developed and will remain in their natural state. This decision emerges not only from the need to screen from existing uses, but also from the environmental constraints that exist in this part of the section of the subject property. The presence of these forest wetlands impedes further developments in the property, including the establishment of larger compact mixed-use developments. While the nursing care center, Zone Office Institutional District, is present to the west, and there are residential areas to the east in the city of Chesapeake, these properties will be screened from view of the property and proposed use by vegetative buffer and the forest wetlands that will remain untouched. It is also important to note that Bridge Road is considered SCAD Special Corridor Overlay District, and therefore, certain development standards apply to this subject property, such as the proposed 30-foot front buffer along Bridge Road. Regarding the proffers, the applicant is proffering the conceptual site plan and its design, as well as committing to maintain the southern portion of the subject property in its natural state. The proffers are visible here on the screen. There are indeed more than just two proffers. There's a small error there. It should be proffer number four, not number two again. But the other two are essentially saying, in case this is not approved, well, if something changes, it wouldn't affect the proffers that are established on proffer one or two. And if, in the event of the conditional rezoning application, the current one is not approved, the city or is overturned by consequential judicial determination, these proffers and the concept plan shall be null and void. So that's what the other two are. In summary, staff finds this proposal, rezoning request, RZN 2024-012, that does meet the intent of the provisions of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and the UDO. The proposed rezoning and addition of two car dealerships to the subject parcel will also contribute to consolidating the Bridge Road corridor as a mixed-use and commercially-friendly area served by major roads and transportation infrastructure. The existing wetlands at the south end of the property would impede further large mixed-use developments, thus leaving the proposed case as an appropriate option for the subject parcel. Furthermore, the proposed use is consistent in character and intensity with the other commercial uses surrounding the subject property. Therefore, staff recommends approval of rezoning request, RZN 2024-012. And this concludes my presentation. I will stand by for any questions for the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Planning Commission and staff. For the record, my name is Lisa Murphy. I'm a local zoning attorney with an office at 440 Monticello Avenue in the city of Norfolk. I'm here today on behalf of the applicant, Peak AVARE LLC. Mr. Borges did an excellent job of describing the application, but essentially, we're taking this approximately 15-acre assemblage of parcels and rezoning just the front seven-and-a-half, 7.8-acre piece, as was indicated, and I think you could get a better idea. Let me see if I can go back to the, there we go. The, this assemblage of parcels, so it's the four lots to the west and then two large parcels. The light green parcel at the rear, where you see the city line coming through, so you've got Suffolk to the left of the red line, and Chesapeake, actually, to the right of the red line. That property is all forested wetlands, and that would remain undeveloped. And I think that was part of what Mr. Borges was saying. So you really end up with a nice buffer between the commercial that's going to be at the front, closest to Bridge Road, where it's appropriate, and then the residential behind it. For all intents and purposes, the lots really behind this are all also forested wetlands and will not likely be developed. That is all part of Farmington Acres Subdivision, which was created back in the 50s and, again, has largely remained undeveloped because of those wetlands. The applicant, as was indicated, intends to relocate two of its car dealerships. This is the Southern Auto Group family of car dealerships. So the Chrysler, Dodge, Jeep, Ram would be the dealerships that would be relocated. You've got a 30,000-square-foot building and a 25,000-square-foot building. Access would be through one service entrance right at Lynn Drive. It's anticipated that construction would commence in June of 2026 and take approximately four to six months. As the staff report indicates, the property is located in the Northern Growth Area within a mixed-use core use district. And as the Comprehensive Plan indicates, mixed-use core areas provide an area for high-intensity business, retail, residential, and civic uses. The proposed rezoning would make the use of this property similar with others in this core district, including other car dealerships, as Mr. Borges mentioned, just across the feet, 250 feet away. The use is appropriate for a mixed-use corridor with a diverse array of existing commercial, office, institutional, and residential uses. And, again, as was indicated in the staff report, because of its proximity and accessibility to Bridge Road, I664, and the Western Freeway, it has that infrastructure already in place for transportation. The character and intensity of the proposed car dealerships align with the existing character and intensity of the uses along the corridor and along the full length of Bridge Road in this section of the city. The proposed rezoning will continue the orderly development along this corridor, as the staff report indicates, and the other commercial uses. It is consistent with the other commercial uses of the corridor. And it does so in a manner that will not negatively impact the overall mixed-use core character condition or the potential future mixed-use developments. As was mentioned, this property, even though it's 15 acres, because of the forested wetlands at the rear, it's not really large enough to put a mix of uses on one parcel. And it, keeping consistent with the development along Bridge Road, this, the proposed use would enable the development of this property that would contribute to the goal of encouraging employment-generating uses. In your staff report, we've got the, or the application's submittal indication that the public utilities are adequate. We've talked about the wetlands at the rear of the property. There will be a wet stormwater pond that will be developed towards the back of the property. Sorry about that. Went the wrong way. There we go. Shows the pond at the rear of the property towards the wetland area. The traffic impact analysis indicates the, although the use of the property now is currently vacant, the O&amp;I zoning district actually has more intense traffic by right than what's proposed. This would be 30% of what would be proposed by right in O&amp;I. Most importantly, the fiscal impact analysis indicates that the proposed rezoning and development of the property will have a very positive fiscal impact. You'll note that there are annual projected cash flow to the city of approximately $250,000. Taken out over time, over five years, that's $790,000. So it will have a benefit. In conclusion, the proposed rezoning is consistent with surroundings uses along this section of Bridge Road, and it meets the intent and provisions of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan and the UDO. It aligns with the goals and objections of the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, which, as I indicated, encourages planned developments and mixed-use districts constituting a variety of land uses and promoting employment-generating land uses and activity centers in strategic locations. So obviously, looking for these types of uses to be in similar or in these strategic locations. This type of greenfield development will enhance the tax base and will provide the type of commercial businesses appropriate for this corridor. As Mr. Borges indicated, staff is recommending approval of the application with the proffers, and we respectfully request that you also recommend approval to City Council. I'm happy to stand by to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Does anyone else make any comments?
Jason Sees, who's the engineer for the project, is here in case there are any technical questions.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Is there anyone in opposition? Seeing none. And you have no additional comments, okay? So we'll close the public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I've got a couple of questions in looking at the, I guess, the plat of this. And it deals with the lots that are designated, I guess, on the, if you're looking at the view of this from the left side, there's some individual lots there. And there's Lynn Drive across the front. Maybe if the, if you could come back and talk a little bit about the entrance off of Bridge Road.
I don't know if we can get this blown up anymore. So if you look to the top of the site plan there, in the left-hand corner, that's the intersection of Bridge and Lynn Drive. And then Lynn Drive runs in front of the properties, or in front of the property. And you've got, it's really interesting on the tax maps because you've got Lynn Drive that runs in front, parallel to Bridge, and then it sort of turns into the Centerra Assisted Living, which you can't really see unless, let me see if I can go back. There we go. So that shows, see that the intersection, right near where it says O&amp;I is the intersection of Bridge and Lynn Drive? And then Lynn Drive comes in at that intersection, and it actually fronts the property. So the property doesn't front Bridge necessarily. It's one street over.
So the entry to your property will be from Lynn Drive?
Be from Lynn Drive, exactly, exactly. So it's a private entrance. So Lynn Drive comes in to the front of the property. There you go. And you can see it'll enter in the middle of the property. So about where it says limits of the rezoning. If you come down a little bit from there, you'll see the entrance. So there'll be-
So the entrance will be at that interchange with College Drive?
No, the entrance will be off of Lynn Drive.
But I mean, the access to the property will be at that same intersection of College Drive and Bridge Road, on the other side of the road?
Yeah, it's College on the other side, right?
All right. How about the individual lots? And maybe this is a question for council here. This was a platted, evidently was a platted subdivision that, and there was a road that has not been developed on this. Is there any problem for the city with this, with any of these being, I guess, a platted lots that are being vacated for this use?
No, those can be resubdivided to erase lot lines. We do it from time to time with different lots.
Okay, cool. That answered my question.
Any other question, Ms. Murphy?
I wanted to follow up on that question. Could you get the slide that has the OI? It's more of a satellite look? We were just referencing it. Not that one. I think I went too far. Hold on. There we go. Okay. This, there.
Okay, are you able to zoom in at all or no? No, okay. So I just want to make sure I'm clear. Lynn Drive, I see where it comes in, and it fronts the development. Thanks, perfect. Oh, back over that way.
Yeah, so it's College on the north side of Bridge and Lynn on the south. I think that might-
Can you push it up a little bit? I have a question about, no, no.
This way?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So just want to make sure I'm understanding all the adjacent parcels. Lynn Drive comes in, fronts on the proposed, you know, project. This cul-de-sac right here, that's the end of Lynn Drive. And to the left of that, that is the retirement home?
Assisted living, yeah.
Assisted living, okay. And there's no development on any of those parcels that was just referenced that was a subdivision?
There is one home, I think, right at, I don't know if you can see where I'm pointing. I don't know if there's a pointer. If you see where 134A20 is, if you look to the left of that, there's a home on that lot. But none of the other, if you see where the road for the subdivision was supposed to come in, none of that infrastructure has been created or improved.
Parking lot for the senior retirement center is all along that end of the cul-de-sac?
Correct. That's all the retirement home.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I've got a comment, Mills. A good description of this road is almost like a service road, this Lynn Drive, because you've got Bridge Road. You come off the bridge, and this is basically like- You come off the bridge, and this is basically like a service road type, you know, is maybe a better description.
Any other question for Ms. Murphy, while she's at the podium?
I have a question. You mentioned that this is for benefit of, or the actual buyer of this property is going to be Southern Auto Group, and they're moving the Jeep. It's a relocation of an existing-
Right, existing from essentially Chesapeake to the east, just under two miles to this location.
Yeah, I thought that, I live that that way, and I thought that they already had a facility there. They're going to be moving to this facility.
Correct, yeah. That is a leased facility, and I think the lease is coming up, so they-
This would be smaller than what they have.
It is. They're looking to relocate, they're looking for more land.
Okay. That's not any criticism. I was just wondering where they were, who it was, because there are a number of dealerships out there, as you know.
And if they could, honestly, if they could develop the whole 15 acres, they probably would. But because it's wet, there's really nothing that they can do with that rear portion.
They're currently located on the old Farm Fresh property, is that correct? Isn't that what, where Farm Fresh are, right in that?
Right in that area. They have, there are multiple dealerships for Southern Auto Group, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
One quick question. How does the city of Chesapeake, that little portion that's in Chesapeake, how does that work with this rezoning?
So one of the things that staff recommended was that we keep the rezoning so that it's entirely on the Suffolk side. But I did reach out to the city of Chesapeake, and staff did as well, and Chesapeake indicated because the, their portion was not being rezoned, and it was wetlands that they didn't have any need to have any kind of public hearing on that.
Thank you, Ms. Murphy. Commissioners, motion?
I'll make a motion for approval to RCN 2024-012.
What conditions?
Yeah, four conditions, I'm sorry.
You got a second? Okay. Any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyman, would you call for the vote, please?
Commissioners, please vote. Oh. There we go. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Congratulations. You have the recommendation for approval from this body, and it will be going to City Council on May 21st. The next item on our agenda today is conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-00023, day support. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2024-023, day support, submitted by Renee Townsend, applicant and property owner, on behalf of Jeffrey Townsend, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish an adult daycare center on property located at 108 North Main Street, zoning map 34G18A, parcel 268. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned CBD Central Business District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as being in the central growth area, mixed-use core land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2024-023. Staff Planner Matthew Madariaga will present staff's report.
Thanks, Kevin. Good afternoon, Chairman and Planning Commissioners. This conditional use permit request before you today is to establish a day support facility at 108 North Main Street. The subject property is located within the central growth area, mixed-use core land use type, and within the Suffolk Voting Borough. Additionally, the property is part of the HC Historic Conservation Overlay District. The property is located in the CBD Central Business District, zoning district, and is surrounded by various businesses and apartments also zoned CBD. The applicant's request is to establish an adult use, or an adult daycare center used to provide a day support service to an underserved portion of the population. Renee's Community and Care is proposed to provide community engagement and help develop social skills for individuals with disabilities. Proposed activities include skill development, recreational activities, employment and vocational services, educational support, and assistance with health and wellness. The proposed day support facility would serve up to 25 clients. The UDO calls for a minimum of one parking space per 375 square feet, meaning a total minimum of 11 spaces for the proposed use, as the building is 3,784 square feet. As the subject property is zoned CBD, the Director of Planning and Community Development is able to waive parking requirements, as there is sufficient street parking as well as multiple parking lots in the area. Clients are proposed to use the entrance in the rear of the building as both an entrance and an exit. This exits out to the municipal lot that serves the courthouse in that area. Hours of operation are proposed as being Monday through Friday from 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Staff has included a condition that limits hours of operation from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., with after-hours events permitted until 10:00 p.m. once per month, not to exceed 12 events per year. Staff believes that the proposed adult daycare use is not expected to adversely impact the surrounding neighborhood. The Departments of Public Works, Utilities, Traffic, and the Bureau of Fire have reviewed this request and have no concerns at this time. Therefore, staff recommends approval of CUP 2024-023, with the condition stated in the staff report. This concludes my presentation. I'll stand by for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Matthew.
Thanks.
We'll now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Commissioner, my name is Jeffrey Townsend. Reside at 121 Niblick Circle, South Virginia. I was here back in 1997, when I started my driving school, 23 years ago. I was here in 2018, when I started my banquet hall. And I also opened a restaurant. So the reason why I say that, because in November of 2024, I had a young man that couldn't speak, and his sister said he loved coming to my restaurant for one reason, because he received peace. So I said, what can I do with my building that I own now at 108 North Main Street? So God laid on my heart, open that day support, give back to the community, even more than what you did in the last 23 years, TJ. So most of my people that know me, they call me TJ. So the main reason why we opened this day support, and want to open day support, is to give back to the city of Suffolk. My clients will come through the rear door. I've got a good staff coming in. I've got some good experience. I also have some mentors coming in to support me and my ideas and my goals. So the main reason I'm here today, to tell you who I am, to remind you, I'm still giving back to the city of Suffolk. If you have any questions, I'd be still here.
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. Is anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Is anyone to speak in opposition?
My name is Edward Beardsley. I live at 116 Catherine Street. I also am an owner of the building at 115 North Main Street and the operator of the business in there, which is the Mod Olive. I'm not in opposition of the use of the space as it is. I think it's of extremely noble and needed service. My concern is the placement of the business. I am also a member of the Downtown Advisory Committee, and I'm tasked with bringing retail interests in. And with the idea of the district, I mean, we're to promote gathering spaces and walkability, and downtown has only about four spaces. I'm talking from the Cultural Arts Center to the center of town, basically, of old downtown Washington Main Street. There's only about four available spaces, two of which are very large, the SunTrust Bank and the old newspaper building. And so in order to attract retail and walkability for the businesses that are there to bring people in, I think that needs to be something that just has to be in the back of the head, is what kind of use of these spaces will meet the mission of developing downtown and increasing accessibility and walkability of that area. Otherwise, it's just going to be a lot of businesses that aren't open to the public or that don't welcome the public in, incidentally. But thank you very much.
Name again, please. Your name again?
My name's Edward Beardsley.
Beardsley, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else to speak in opposition? That in time, in the time for opposition, I'll give Mr. Townsend a chance for rebuttal.
And I do agree with Plaid Turner. I do agree with him. We need to do more to bring more people downtown. This building been vacant for a whole year. So if they had some concern, they could have purchased the building. I even, I even wanted to sell the building one time, and nobody, no contacts, nobody even called my phone to buy the building. So the building been vacant for a whole year, so are we going to continue having vacant buildings? And still, nobody is doing nothing with these buildings. So yes, I do agree with him. But I think the city of Suffolk can do more to bring people down here to support the business downtown. I got a restaurant, and my restaurant doesn't do as well as a lot of the other restaurants, maybe because we don't do enough activities to bring people downtown. If we do five events a year, seven events a year, that's not enough. We cannot survive off seven or 10 events. If you look at the other cities, they doing events almost every week. We have a brand-new facility ready to cross the street from my restaurant. Have we ever even used that facility? No. It's a waste of tax money. We used it for a ice rink back in December. We probably had about 10 customers go into that ice rink. It really wasn't an ice rink. It was some hard plastic. So can we do more? Yes, we can do more as a citizen. Maybe get different ideas. All right?
Thank you, Mr. Townsend. We will now close the public hearings. Commissioners, questions, comments, or a motion?
What is 023?
A motion for approval? You got a second?
Yes.
Any discussion of the motion?
Yeah, I'd like to follow up on comments that were made both by Mr. Beardsley and the applicant. I'm going to try to stay in my lane here, because I understand that I'm not part of revitalizing downtown, but I do want you to know both of what you said. Your voices were heard, and I do feel a little bit of a conflict here. I think it is a, having vacant buildings, nobody wants that in their downtown. I sure don't. And it does seem a little bit out of sync with everything else that I think we're trying to have going on the storefronts in Main Street, but it was a good point made that it's been available to be filled by a business, and the business didn't come that matched the current use that it's really designed for. So I'm a little bit conflicted with my vote.
I'd like to just make a comment that the entrance to this facility would be using the rear entrance on Commerce Side and not be on Main Street, affronting the Mod Olive. Any other discussion? Mr. Wyman, would you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Congratulations, Mr. Townsend. This will go to City Council on May 21st with the recommendation of approval from this body. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is exception request, CEX 2024-00003, 100 Lakeview Court. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Exception request, CEX 2024-003, 100 Lakeview Court, submitted by Stephen Harmon, applicant and property owner, in accordance with Sections 31415 and of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant an exception to the development criteria and buffer area requirements of the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area, to permit the installation of an in-ground swimming pool to encroach into the 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer on property located at 100 Lakeview Court Landing, zoning map 25F, parcel 31. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Holy Neck Voting Borough, zoned RL Residential Low Density Zoning District. The 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area, suburban neighborhood land use type. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution for a Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area exception request for property located at 100 Lakeview Court, zoning map 25F, parcel 31, account number 23, 253152800, CEX 2024-003. Once again, Staff Planner Gonzalo Borg will present staff's report.
Thank you again, Kevin. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vice Chairman, and Planning Commissioners. This Chesapeake Bay Protection Act exception request before you today is to allow encroachment and installation of an in-ground pool and concrete decking into the 100-feet Resource Protection Area, also known as RPA, located at 100 Lakeview Court, zoning map 25F, parcel 31. The city's 2045 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area, suburban neighborhood land use type. The subject property is located in the RL Residential Low Density Zoning District and contains 100-foot RPA buffer. The property is surrounded at north by Lake Mead, Zone C Conservation Zoning District, and to the southeast and west by residential properties, Zone RL Residential Low Density Zoning District. The property, the subject property, is 0.6 acres, or 25,772 square feet in size, and features a single-family dwelling. There are titled wetlands present along the rear of the property that are contiguous to Lake Mead, which is property of the city of Portsmouth. This is why, I'm sorry, which is a drinking water reservoir, and therefore has a 100-foot Resource Protection Area Buffer. The applicant is proposing to install 448 square feet in-ground pool and 495 square feet concrete decking into the RPA buffer. Both the pool and the deck will be placed in the rear yard, in an open space currently covered by grass. The side and rear yards are situated almost entirely within the 100-feet buffer. The proposed in-ground pool is projected to be located between the 50-foot seaward part of the RPA and the residential home, with the pool being entirely located in the 50-foot landward portion of the buffer. The applicant proposes a total of 1,768 square feet of land disturbance to install the pool and the deck. This total land disturbance includes the necessary construction access and the silt fence Pools are accessory structures, and they are not permitted in the RPA. The subject pool is proposed to be fully installed within the RPA, to be more specific, in the 50-landward portion. These will increase the current and previous area from 0 square feet to 943 square feet within the RPA buffer. Similar requests to encroach within the RPA buffer to develop within a critical and protected area have not been supported by staff. Signed, accessory structures are not permitted in the RPA, nor is a structure a water-dependent facility. Staff also believes that this request is self-imposed and is not the minimum necessary to afford relief, as the pool is an accessory structure. Once again, it is not permitted structure in the RPA. Once again, it is not permitted structure in the RPA. In accordance with the guidance outlined in the Repairian Buffers Modification and Mitigation Manual, for every 400 square feet of land disturbance, one unit of vegetation is required to be placed back within the 100-foot RPA Buffer. A buffer mitigation plan was indeed provided and depicts five units of vegetation to offset the impacts of the new impervious, the new impervious cover and land disturbance generated by the construction process. There are no direct impacts to the wetlands as part of this request. However, as proposed, the project would result in an increase from the current zero square feet of impervious surface to 943 impervious surface. Even with buffer mitigation plan in place, the installation of the pool would lead to a significant loss of pervious surface, aggravate the risk of erosion, and lead to an increase in runoff within the property and also within the RPA. Staff finds that this exception request to install an in-ground pool within the existing footprint of a concrete patio, pardon, that's, that's wrong. This request to install in-ground pool and concrete decking within the 100-foot RPA Buffer does not satisfy the criteria outlined in the Section 31415F5C of the Unified Development Ordinance. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the exception request, CEX 2024-003. This concludes my presentation, and I will stand by for any questions that you might have after the public hearing. Thank you.
We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to speak in favor of this request?
Afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, Director Wyman, staff. My name is Stephen Harmon. My wife Nancy and I reside at 100 Lakeview Court, Peach Cutter Point subdivision here in Suffolk. We appreciate the opportunity to speak with you today regarding our request for an exception to the Chesapeake Bay Preservation Area Regulations to permit the installation of an in-ground pool within 100-foot RPA Buffer on our property. This subdivision was platted and developed prior to 1991, before some of these rules and regulations were in place. We fully recognize the importance of the CBPA Regulations and the critical role that these buffer zones play in protecting water quality, reducing erosion, and preserving the health of the Chesapeake Bay and its surrounding ecosystems. It's with that understanding that we work closely with the licensed surveyor, a licensed engineer, and environmental consultants to ensure that our proposed design meets all environmental standards and minimizes any potential impacts. Unfortunately, due to the configuration of our lot, there's no feasible location outside of the RPA Buffer where the pool can be placed without significant disturbance to existing structures or requiring major grading. We have therefore proposed a design that minimizes the footprint of the pool area. Much smaller than our original design. It incorporates the pervious materials for the surrounding patio and includes a mitigation plan with native vegetation plantings and enhanced stormwater management strategies. We're not requesting this exception lightly. We are committed to the protecting the environmental integrity of the area and are prepared to implement all required best management practices, including additional landscaping and runoff controls to offset the proposed encroachment. We respectfully ask that the Commission consider the unique characteristics of our property, our commitment to mitigation, and our efforts to balance responsible development with environmental protection. We are happy to answer any questions or provide any additional information as needed. Thank you again for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Is there anyone else to speak in favor of this request? Seeing none. Is there anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none. We will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
I've got a question for staff in reference to, I'm looking at, I guess it's the satellite shot, and the way I see, can y'all bring it back up? The, it's just basically like a clear shot of the, of the property. Oh, I don't know. Um, it's like the satellite, uh, let me see. The, the land, oh, is that, yeah, that one. So the way I take it, the RPA is, the red line is your RPA, is that correct? Incorrect.
That is the lot line.
Okay.
Well, part of the lot line, yeah.
Okay. And just by zooming in on this, I see his next-door neighbor's got a swimming pool that's out there as well, just barely. So that's what I was just trying to clarify where we were going with this. Thank you.
I'd ask you to go back, please. Sorry, we'll get you exercised today. I had the same, basically the same question, and maybe, Kevin, we, we know this. The property adjacent to this, the red line is the property line, and I, I live in a such a situation similar to this in another neighborhood, but the property behind the red line is owned by Portsmouth, City of Portsmouth, the Water Department, but it's, it's kind of available for use by, with some restrictions, but et cetera. But I'm, in looking at this same overhead picture, it would appear that the pool on the adjacent property is actually closer to the property line than it would be on the one that's coming before us today. Do we have any history at all on, on the adjacent property's pool? Or was that given a grant? Or do we have any idea of knowing that, Kevin?
We can look at our records as it relates to that property, but as it relates to this request, we do not have that information available right now.
I was going to mention that the RPA, I don't know if you can see it, I struggle with this pointing thing. Seems that I can do it now. So this line here, going up, that is the 100-feet Buffer. And so it's, goes through here, goes over part of the residence? Okay? So this is the 100-feet RPA. Next to it, there's the 50-feet Buffer. So the RPA is divided into two portions. You have the fif, the first 50-feet landward and the second 50-feet seaward. So that's what those are. The other red line, I believe, would be this one, which is the property line, which is also the proper, the city line with the City of Portsmouth, because they, they own the, the water reservoir. It's a drinking water reservoir, so that's what you see there. So on the survey, but the other, the, the, this exhibit does not have the, the RPA line, it's just the, the lot configuration.
I have a, just a comment, maybe. The 100-foot RPA, if you're looking at this map, this, the house itself that's owned by the Harmones are very close to the, to the 100-foot RPA. And that 100-foot RPA was put in after the, the house was there. There are also some other houses that are obviously within 100-feet of the water. Okay? Where, where this is. I mean, south of, south of their property, and you're talking about the property to the south of theirs, is also, you, you've got a pool to the south of that that's obviously in the RPA, within the RPA.
Yes, sir.
If not the house itself.
Yeah.
So, I mean, my feeling is, they shouldn't be penalized because their house, their house happens to be very close to this 100-foot RPA, 100-foot RPA. And, and nor should some of these other folks that live out there on, on Lakeview Court. Anyway, that's just a, a con, well, I guess my motion would be that it, that it should be approved, the 2024-0003, CEX 2024, would be approved despite, and I hate going against what has been researched by the planning department, but I, I just think that in reality, we need to make some decisions that, that may or may not be, that may or may not be in, in coordination with the present RPA. They are, the red line on this thing, they are in, they are, obviously, the engineer who laid this out, he, he made allowances for that, for the, for the property itself. And, and who, and the City of Portsmouth or City of Norfolk, whoever owns the lakes, you know, they, that's already there, but I just think that we need to, to be able to show that, that we can do, they own the property. I mean, these folks own the property out there, and they pay taxes on it. So that's my motion.
Got a motion for approval?
Yes.
You got a second? Any discussion on the motion?
Um, I, I do have a, a question. I believe that there is some language in here that would have some conditions that far as, that probably should have been, be attached to that. Is that correct?
Yeah, there, there.
With conditions?
Yeah. Call the conditions cover with the.
With, with conditions. I think it specifies that in here or explains it, anyway.
I'm good with it.
Okay?
I have to say this, since pools are not permitted in the RPA, and since we're talking about a huge pool and a big deck, I can't support this, I'm sorry.
Wyman, will you call for the vote, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioners, please vote.
Again? This is abortion for approval.
Approval.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of five to two.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Congratulations, Mr. Harmon, Mrs. Harmon. Do you have this body approval of the, for your pool? And there's no other action required from this, from the city? The next item on our agenda is ordinance text amendment, OTA 2024-0007. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. Ordinance text amendment, OTA 2024-007, initiated by the City of Suffolk for amendments to the Code of the City of Suffolk, Section 31105, consistency with comprehensive plan, Section 31303, comprehensive plan amendment, Section 31403, relation of zoning districts to comprehensive plan and purpose statements, Section 31404, zoning map, Section 31408, specific base zoning district criteria, Section 31409, incentive zoning, Section 31410, planned development, Section 31411, use patterns, Section 31412, special corridor overlay district, Section 31607, parks and open space, Appendix A, definitions, and Appendix B, submission requirements, Section B3, comprehensive plan amendment applications. The purpose of these text amendments is to update code references to the comprehensive plan within the Unified Development Ordinance in an effort to be consistent with Suffolk 2045, the City of Suffolk Comprehensive Plan. When you act on this request, you'll be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council as it relates to ordinance text amendment, OTA 2024-007. Staff Planner Keith Kennedy will present staff's report on this item.
Good afternoon, everyone. This item on your agenda today is for consideration of OTA 2024-007. This item pertains to consistency between the city zoning ordinance and the city's adopted comprehensive plan. This ordinance text amendment was prompted by the recent, recent action by City Council to adopt Suffolk 2045, the update to the comprehensive plan. The city zoning ordinance contains several references to the comprehensive plan. These references include the prior comprehensive plan 2035, as well as earlier versions of the plan from 2026 and 2018. Illustrate what is being proposed with this text amendment, I've selected a couple of examples of the proposed text. This first example is from Article 1, General Provisions, Section 31-105, Consistency with the Comprehensive Plan. The term concept map is found in this section. This is one of the terms that refers to an earlier adopted comprehensive plan. It occurs 15 times throughout the zoning ordinance. This amendment would remove this term, as shown here by the red strike, the red strike through of the text. So 15 of the actual changes pertain to that one term. This next example is from Article 4, Zoning, Section 31-403, Relation of Zoning to Comprehensive Plan and Purpose, Purpose Statements. This section of the ordinance references and describes the land use types that were identified in the 2035 Comprehensive Plan. Of course, as you all know, terms and descriptions of the land use types have changed with the 2045 Comprehensive Plan, so this amendment also removes the old terms and descriptions from the document. And finally, this last example is from Article 4, Section 31-412, Special Corridor Overlay District. This section of the ordinance references a specific action item from the 2026 Comprehensive Plan. And so we have several of these in the document now as well. So again, this amendment would remove this reference as well as the others, as shown through the strike-through language here. So pretty straightforward, housecleaning type of amendment that will bring the, the ordinance in compliance with the recently adopted Comprehensive Plan. We were a little surprised by just how many references there were, so consequently, that thick item in your agenda today. So, Mr. Chairman, that concludes my presentation. I'll stand by for any questions or comments after the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Kennedy. We will now open the public hearing. Does anyone, in addition to Mr. Kennedy, would like to make any comments? Seeing none. Is there anyone in the audience would like to make any comments in opposition? Again, seeing none. We will now close the public hearing. Commissioners, comments, questions, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd move the approval of ordinance text amendment, OTA 2024-007.
Motion and a second, and any discussion in the motion? Mr. Wyman, will you call for the vote, please?
Sir, Commissioners, please vote. Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of seven to zero.
Thanks for all your hard work, Mr. Kennedy. You know, when I was reading that, I was thinking that we're not referring to the comp plan at all anymore in, in, but the number. We're referring to the comp plan, but we're not putting a number, a year number on it, which is going forward, we won't be dealing with this again. Thank you. I don't think we have any old business, and a new business, the City Council meeting on March 19th, the status report, Mr. Wyman?
Yes, sir. There were three public hearings presented for City Council's consideration at their meeting on March 19th, 2025. The first being the Bridgeport's request for a conditional use permit to operate a live entertainment, both indoor and outdoor, after 10:00 PM, and a farmer's market slash flea market use on Bridge Road. That was approved with conditions. The conditional use permit request for 140 West Washington Street, this was an adult daycare center to be located there, that was approved with amended conditions, and a conditional use permit for the proposed DBAT on Shoulders Hill Road. That was the indoor baseball and softball training facility that we classify as amusement and entertainment and indoor rec center. That was approved with the staff recommended conditions as well.
There was no preliminary plat. Commissioners, your comments?
And I did have one thing, yes. We are very. We are very fortunate to have two new staff members with us, so I wanted to introduce them really quick. We have a new planning technician in Sierra Towns. These are friendly faces that you'll see at the, the front of our office, and Russell Deans, who is our new office assistant. So when y'all are out and about in the department, you have some new friendly faces to look forward to seeing.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman, and, and welcome. If there's nothing else, Commissioners, we stand adjourned.